It's nine oh four, we're gonna get this board supervised meeting running here. Mr. Bradford, could you give us an invitation?
Yeah.
Warren is on the way and Angela and Ricky are on the phone.
Let us guide his. Oh, I return to father, we thank you this morning of God for allowing us to see another day. And father, we just ask so God to continue to search our hearts and our minds, oh God. And let it be on you, oh father. Father, we just pray for peace across this nation, in this state, in this county, in this city, God. Father, continue to protect our elected officials, oh God. And father, we just ask so God that you continue to bless each and every one of us, oh God. Father, we just want to send a special prayer out to the former president, Donald Trump, and his family, oh God. Father, continue to protect them. And we wish speedy recovery on that, oh God. And father, we just want to pray for unity, oh God, amongst everybody under the sound of my voice, oh God. That we may understand that it's all about you, God. Father, we thank you right now, we give your name, all our praise and go to Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Well, this is planned. My pleasure ladies.
To the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, they need a motion to get approval of docket.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Did you print out the rollers, I don't know if you hear?
I did, I already told them, but I, we can do that. Ricky Gray?
Here.
Angela Hutchins?
Here.
All right. Warren Gaines is on the way. Wes Middleton. Paige Dean?
Present.
Randy Lewis. She on the phone? Okay, she's out. Scott Slower?
Present.
Stephanie Hutchinson? And I'm here. Okay. I got a... We're proving the dockets, you know, Wes made a motion, I need a second.
Check.
Second by Mr. Gray. All in favor, or any discussion first? You got any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any needs? Motion carries. All right. Special presentations. Parker Maxwell? Where is that, Florida?
That's Parker Claire.
Parker Claire Maxwell.
She's not here.
Okay. All right. And it says J.J. Rad, but I know that it's not J.J. Rad, it's Reagan. Hey, you, y'all come up to front. She's just gonna make you come up here by yourself? I'll be up there, just saying. All right, this is an elected official scholarship. To Bigfoota Scholarship in honor of your outstanding performance, we'd like to present Reagan Rad with a two thousand twenty-four elected official scholarship awarded on this day. Uh, it's gonna be presented this young lady. Nobody's here to take it. I got, there's somebody here to take a picture of them.
Uh, I'm coming to crash, party with y'all.
You're part of the family, huh?
That's right.
That's right. Congratulations. And there. Good job. We've got another one, but I don't think that young, so the young lady's right to sign here.
Yes.
She has to go. She has to go. I got her phone. I'm coming back.
I'm gonna butcher this name, but I believe it's, um, Pejero Magdari. Uh, she's not here. If she shows up, we will present hers as well.
Thank y'all.
Wayne here, is Wayne here, or are you gonna?
I haven't seen him.
Okay.
He will come next meeting, he has to be here anyway.
So he's, he's off?
Right, but Texas doesn't be here, the person, just his contract renewed.
All right, um. Okay. Um, city government, if any? We got any city government? Department reports. Ladies?
Good morning.
Good morning.
And I came up with Adam's account, he now all this fact. Hey, I want a request of new hire. It's gonna be a replacement. For Miss Sarah Jordan.
Okay. Got her. Right here. New hire, full-time telecommunications, twelve dollars an hour, twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixty dollars a year. Need a motion?
Sub moved.
Read by Mr. Middleton, I need a second. Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All? All in favor? All right. Any needs? Motion carries.
All right, I got a request for travel for orientation class. Came from Mississippi on August nineteenth through the twentieth. Two employees, a journalist, Severio, and a Sarah Jordan.
Okay, I've got them here. I need a motion?
Sub moved.
Read by Mr. Middleton, I need a second? Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Any needs? Motion carries.
That's all, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm tracking one in Compton for Adams County. Requesting travel for Sharon Jefferson to a recent management conference in Pearl, August twentieth and twenty-first.
What was it, what was the name?
Uh, Sharon. The Mass Insurance for recent management conference. Kevin, can you repeat that?
Uh, let me find it, and I'll, uh... Do not sit here. Is it in, repeating this?
Angela's travel for Sharon for training.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything with you?
I gave it to Zayir when he was over here to put it in the folder.
I just say if you put it somewhere, somewhere else.
If need be, can you fill it out?
Yeah, I will do it.
In the county business, father. All right. Sharon Jefferson, a management conference in Pearl. Uh, I need a motion.
Sub moved.
Read by Mr. Middleton. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Any needs? Motion carries. That's all you have? Thank you.
Morning, Mary K. Doherty, Adams County Youth Court.
Hey, Mary, how you doing?
Good. All right. Last time I was here, I had some travel, and I have a few more for the juvenile justice conference, which is dated August seventh through the ninth, and that will be held in Biloxi at the IP. And I am requesting two other employees to go to them.
Okay.
You should have the paperwork in your folder. First name is Hollis Hunt. And TFLs.
I've got Christine Beckham.
I've got some more, so there should be.
I got Christine, are these mixed up, maybe a little bit?
They should have been separate emails. I have copies of them with me.
I got this, uh, Henry Up...
That's, oh, that's different.
Charles Stein Beckham?
That's for, that's for detention.
Oh, grant approved.
Kind of right.
I'm sorry. Okay. The grant approved, reverse thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you now. Uh, any, uh, need a motion?
Sub moved.
And this, this is for, if y'all didn't hear, Hollis Hunt and TFLs. Motion by Mr. Middleton, I need a second.
Check.
Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Uh, any needs? Motion carries.
Next, I have a travel request. Uh, we are, they are having the Mississippi Association of Drug Court Professionals held here in Natchez this year, September eighteenth through twentieth. And so all we are required to do is pay for registration. We won't have to pay for hotel meals or anything like that for our staff to go. I have thirteen going from grant equity funds. And I have one request for Judge Brown to attend out of his youth court budget, which is already budgeted for.
Okay. So we don't need any paperwork for that, you just?
I, I do, why?
We didn't need a motion?
Registration, which is two fifty, we do early bird, so I do have a request into you. And I have all the names I can call out of everybody that going to the Mississippi Association Drug Court Professionals here in town. So do you want me to do that? It's registration has to be paid, and that's part of travel.
Yeah, go ahead.
For training. Okay. So we've got Judge Brown, Hollis Hunt, Jessica Lewis, Pamela Walker, Mary K. Doherty, TFLs, Christie Castle, Nifa Hardy, Karen Duney Vaughn, Emily Kate Boom, Latonya Kennedy, Sharon Hall, Shirley Brown, Sondra Thatcher. Some of these are, all of these people are part of our drug court team that we staff on twice a month.
Okay. I need a motion.
Sub moved.
Read by Mr. Middleton. I need a second. Second by Mr. Gray. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Any needs? Motion carries.
All right, I have one more thing. Uh, we recently received a letter from Pam Holmes with the AOC. Said we were allocated more money than we usually get, yay. Uh, as generally, last year we received sixty-five thousand for our family drug court program, and we received seventy-five thousand for our youth drug court program. Both of these awards were increased to a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year. Uh, and that would have gone into effect July one. With that being said, I have a new budget that I've turned into Miss Stephanie, and she's received that by email. Uh, that also does make some changes. We lost Fund One Thirty-One, as I told y'all, the mentoring grant that we had. That has ended. And so I have changed the personnel on Funds One Twelve and One Seventeen due to those increases. So since that other one had left, we do have some increases now. And we have an increased request for Hollis Hunt and TFLs and Mary K. Doherty. And all that is in front, you should have a copy of that. If not, I have one.
You might have to bring it to me, because I have not seen that. Some of this stuff's been out of order, it's going.
Do you have a moment about employee numbers?
TFLs?
Yep.
There you go. Who was the other one?
Hollis Hunt and Mary K. Doherty.
Mary K. Doherty, okay.
See, that one, yeah, that one ended, so then there's the changes.
Oh, sure.
President, welcome.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you repeat what you said?
Yes, ma'am, I'm, I'm trying to get us, there, there's one program ended, so they're all, these are all zeroed out on the, on the same people, TFLs, uh, Hollis Hunt and Mary K. Doherty. Uh, and then they're starting a new fund. Uh, let's see, the first one is Mary K. She's at thirty-nine twenty an hour, fifteen thousand two hundred eighty-nine annually. Second is, is, uh... I guess she's, she's, uh, in here twice, Mary K. again.
I'm paid out of like six or seven different funds. I have no county money coming to my payroll at all.
All right. The second one is thirty oh nine, at nineteen thousand five hundred sixty. The third one's Mary K. again, at thirty-three ninety-four, at twenty-two thousand and fifty-eight. The next one is Mary K. again, at thirty-three eighty-three, at thirteen thousand one hundred ninety-three. Hollis Hunt.
Some of those did not change, just, I'm sorry, some of those did not change at all. They were just, uh, the, the amount didn't change for the amount of that funding itself, and I put notes in all of that. It was just like that, maybe the hour rate changes or whatever, because I had to change the percentages as I lost the other grants, the one that was employee number seven, 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 for the One Thirty-One funds. Since that changed, I had to change the percentages and all the rest of them. So it went from six of them to five of them, and so the percentage changed for like the amount of, my insurance coming out and whatnot, so that's what changed on it, not the amounts.
Okay. All right, uh, the next one was Hollis Hunt at seventeen oh two an hour, thirty-five thousand four hundred. TFLs, seventeen oh two an hour, thirty-five thousand four hundred. Another one for Mary K.
Those are two increases for them, for thirty-three thousand.
Okay, this is another Mary K., but this is another zeroed out. The next one is Mary K. at thirty-nine twenty, fifteen thousand two hundred eighty-nine. Did, uh, have we got duplicates of these? I believe we do. Let me check this. That's probably zeroed out, not, just because, uh, the date, they changed the date.
Some of those sounded like repeated, so just getting away numbers.
I think we got a couple of duplicates here. Now we've got to sort things out, because I don't want to sign something. They changed, all of them have changed. Okay, and this, twelve eighty-five. Okay. Some, a lot of these are tossed out too. Do you have the numbers of the, the ones that were, were okay in today?
Just be on my paperwork page.
Okay. I just want to make sure we don't get any duplicates in here.
I put employee numbers on, on the top of each one.
We'll have somebody else go through them anyway. You've got a stack of the ones that are canceled out?
Yep. There's just one zeroed out.
Okay. And besides you, who else, uh?
TFLs, Hollis Hunt. Due to the increase in those budgets, One Twelve and One Seventeen have received increases.
This is the most paperwork I believe I've seen.
So in other words, they all need to be signed in, because it's super fun and all of that.
And then I have right four.
Program ended first. Do we need to call out the ones that program ended on today? Just sign them off. All right, first I, did you give me a motion? I need a motion to, and, uh, Ricky and Angela?
Yes.
Are y'all clear on what we're doing here? Mary K. has about five different ones, and she gets paid off of five different funds. And then we also had TFLs and Hollis Hunt.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Is this part of this budget next year, but I thought I heard that she gets some addition of fund, so, uh, is that gonna be part of this year budget, or next year budget, or how, how are you gonna do that?
I think Stephanie's gonna clear that up.
It wouldn't affect July one.
It'd be part of both, because the state is on their state calendar year, we're on the high total calendar year, so it'll fit both.
Did, did you hear that, Ricky?
I did not.
It'll be part of both, because, uh, part of her stuff is on the state calendar, not on our calendar.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. Motion by Mr. Middleton, I need a second.
Right.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All, uh, all in favor? All right. Any needs? Motion carries.
That's all I have today, have a great day.
It's been fun.
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking. No, so, go ahead, Mr. Judge.
Okay. Good morning, Joe Bellin of the Hamilton Recovery Court. Uh, just like Mary K. said, we're requesting approval to attend the Mississippi Association Drug, Association Drug Court Professional Conference. Uh, myself and Miss Woods here. I was gonna pay for four with grant funds, AOC grant funds, we should be paying for six.
Uh, do we have that paperwork?
I didn't spend any paperwork, because there's no, no hotels, stays, no meals, nothing, it's just the conference.
Oh. Okay, go ahead and call the names, and we'll, uh, get a motion.
Okay, I have the one-one-eight budget paid myself, Joe Bellin, Agent Robert Starks, Case Manager Duchess Crater, and Andre Wallace, one of the assistant district attorneys. Out of the one-two-nine fund, which is the mental health treatment court fund, we paying for Judge Drake, Judge Blackwell, Pierce Beach, Fran Gines, and Pam Turner.
So it's a whole. You need to get all of this?
Yeah, just email me those names, please.
Okay. Does she need to do that as well? We're gonna do one at a time here.
Okay, and I, the same training for the Mississippi Association Drug Court, I'll be paying for six individuals out of the mental health treatment court, that'd be for myself, Fran Gines, Pam Turner, St. Pierce, Judge Blackwell, and Judge Crater.
Did you get all of it? Are you good?
Just email me.
Okay, you heard the request, I need a motion to approve them.
Yes.
Yes.
What was the request?
They're all going to the same conference here in town. They just have to pay the registration fees.
They're paid out of a grant.
All paid out of a grant. So... Move by Mr. Gaines? Second by Mr. Middleton, any, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any needs? Motion carries.
Okay, I'm also requesting another training, this will be shipped from mental health treatment court. The training is called MRT training, that's recommended, um, from AOC. Um, it's an online training, no travel, no hotel stay, and it costs six eighty per person, um, and shipping as well, so I'll be registering three people. Me, myself, Fran Gines, and Judge Cormen Drake. Um, and that's supposed to come out to be two thousand, eight to two thousand sixty-five, ten, and it'll be fully reimbursed by AOC. The dates for that is, um, August the twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth.
Okay, I need a motion. Move by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. President?
Yes.
When they talk, it's a pity, because I can't do it.
Okay, um, she's asking for online, uh, training for Judge Drake?
Fran Gines.
Fran Gines?
Cassandra Woods.
And Sandra Woods?
Cassandra Woods.
Cassandra Woods, I'm sorry, Cassandra. Oh. They'll be doing all, okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? All right. Any needs? Motion carries. Is that all?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for, uh, need to call Mr. Paul Stevens? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Hold on one second there. Ma'am, I, I see you're the recipient of a scholarship, could you tell me what your name is?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll pass that to the end, Paul Stevens is the third.
Doing it.
We'll be close to termination. Sit up for passes to the end.
Paul Stevens?
Hit Pat Paul to the end.
Okay, got you. Kira Meraday. Okay, she's, uh, Kira Meraday is a, um, elect, has received an elected official scholarship in honor of her outstanding performance, we'd gladly present Kira Meraday with the two thousand twenty-four elected official scholarship. Thank you. We're very proud of you. Could you get her a picture that you took earlier, if you hadn't already?
I will.
Okay, here's, here's. Congratulations. All right, Mr. Bradford?
Good morning, everybody. I'm Brad Adams County. Uh, so what I got, I've seen this morning, uh, we're gonna start our safe room restoration project. It's gonna start next week. Uh, we're gonna start, we're gonna paint, uh, we're gonna purchase a watch in the year. We're gonna update our camera system, and, uh, we're gonna prep for shelf operations if we get a hurricane up there, so we'll be stocking our safe room. I will water perishable, plank, the things that nature, uh, look to make cross. Uh, it, it's gonna reopen to the public, uh, September first, so it'll be shut down to Sept- September first for any public use, but if we have emergency use training, you'll be able to get in there and utilize it. Or if we get finished before September first, I'll come to the board and give you another progress on that day, we can reopen it up, uh, prior to September first.
Okay.
On the sirens, we're just still waiting on information to upgrade our sirens. Uh, as we know, our, um, radio system is outdated, and it's hard to find the radios that, that's for them. But we do have a company, I think they're out of Florida, uh, but it can, uh, have the technology to transition the, the radio over to what we uh, but he can, uh, have the technology to transition the, the radios, uh, over to what we're using now with our P twenty-five technology, uh, which is a misway system. So I'm waiting to hear back the information on that, uh, on what it gonna cost. I did submit my budget and agree to miss, uh, Washington, uh, in preparation for that. So soon as we hear the information on that, uh, I come back to the board and let them know how much it's gonna cost and if we can be able to do that, on that. Uh, right now, like I said, we still want our average kind of residents, uh, to continue sign up for hyper reach. Uh, right now, uh, we got one thousand fifty-one, uh, they're slowly coming, so I anticipate after the next wedding event, their number gonna rise. Uh, so you know, a lot of people just wait for something to happen before they sign up, but we encourage people to go out and just go ahead and sign up, sign your kids up. They say as long as you got, just go ahead and, and put it out, uh, to your families, things of that nature. Uh, third thing is, I'm requesting travel to Waver, Mississippi, uh, for the Mississippi Civil Defense Emergency Management Association Board, uh, workshop, uh, the association is paying for all the, uh, expenses, and that's gonna be July the thirtieth to August the first.
Did you have any paperwork on that?
No, the association is paying.
Okay, okay.
I just have to approve that.
You need approved? Alright, I need a motion, uh, for travel, for Mr. Bradford, moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Middleton. Uh, Ricky and Angela, did you hear the motion?
Motion for travel for Brad.
Right, and it's being pa- paid for. Out of one of his funds, oh.
No, the association.
Oh, the association, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
That's it for today, any questions?
Thank you.
One, all I have is, uh, we might be looking at, there are some fire department looking about a burn van if we don't get any rain anytime soon, because it's hot and dry, so. If you get in the rain, don't have rain anytime soon, we're gonna look at a burn van.
Okay, Angela, Ricky, did you hear that? If, if we don't get any rain anytime soon, we're, we're gonna be looking to maybe place a burn van. Alright.
That's all.
Thank you. Alright, there.
Good morning, Lord.
Hey, how you doing?
Alright, how you doing? Uh, I, I've come to request travel for myself and one of my employees, uh, Charles Dean Beckham to a juvenile justice symposium, set the date the ninth of August. Uh, you guys should have a.
I, I got it.
You got it?
Alright, uh, Ricky and Angela, this is, uh, Mr. Upshaw requesting travel for, um, Henry Upshaw and, uh, Charles Dean Beckham to the juvenile justice symposium in Biloxi.
It's in his budget?
Yes, it is.
It's in his budget, yes, ma'am. Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've got three quick issues. Uh, Monette Smith couldn't be here, so this is for y'all's, uh, Hollis Home Grant, y'all can draw a fund for. She has four invoices, construction invoices to get approved, and then three inspection invoices for approval for her, she's gonna pay for the contractors and inspectors.
Okay, what, what do you got?
Uh, well, for the four, uh, the four construction invoices are, uh, right at fifteen thousand three hundred twenty dollars, and for the three inspections, it's, uh, four hundred fifty dollars.
Okay, he just needs a motion. I need a motion to approve those signatures. Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Angela, Ricky, did you hear what, what, uh, we're doing here? Okay, you heard, okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I did not hear a motion.
Okay, the, the motion was to pay the invoices on, uh, the home grants, a couple of the home grants for, uh, did you say surveying or?
Inspection.
Inspections, alright, and, and some of the work that's already been done.
This is the funds you guys set aside.
This is the, yeah, from the ARPA fund.
Okay.
Question, um.
Yes.
I have a question for Alan, Ms. Blair.
Did you hear Alan? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, what about those other home grants? From the Snapper and Gill, have they been, or wanted their homes yet, or they approved their repairs or what?
Alright, so, yeah, that was, that's my next, my next subject, like, uh, the, the grant you guys received through the Mississippi Home Corporation, we have four homes in that project, and I'm ready to proceed with advertising for contractors, so I just need y'all's approval. This is two separate, two separate projects. So I'm finally ready to proceed with advertising for contractors.
Okay, so you.
The one she's referring to.
Okay, so you need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
Alright, moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Milton. Any discussion?
Yes, repeat that.
Repeat, repeat what you.
Yeah, Angela, the grant we received a, a long time ago for, through the Mississippi Home Corporation, we have four, we have four homes, uh, three are, uh, three are trailers that are being replaced and one is a, is a rehab. Uh, we're ready to proceed with, with advertising for contractors. And I, I've told some homeowners this already, and they're excited about it, so.
Okay, right. The house that was received, aren't you the contractor for that also?
What was that?
The home that was?
That, uh, they done replaced.
It's part of, that's part of the motion, right?
It is.
Yeah, it's part of the motion. All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Alright, the last thing, uh, we sent letters to, to our counties. We are partnering with the, uh, I don't know if you've heard of this, with Office of Broadband Expansion and Accessibility of Mississippi, uh, Mississippi receives a ton of money, uh, for broadband expansion in areas that are either underserved or, underserved or, or not served at all. What they're willing us to do is some outreach, and our three main counties we're focusing on are Adams, Lincoln, and Pike. These are areas that are mostly served, but there's a challenge process. If you have any homeowners that claim they are not served, let us know. And there's a challenge process where we can go in, we can check their internet speed, and it, it's a process that go through an upload to their system that shows they are in fact not served, while the map, they have a map in Mississippi, shows all these areas. And so if, if there's a challenge process, we have to find ten home, if, if there's a single homeowner that says they don't have the service the, the map claims they have, we have to find another nine in that area, and do all these speed tests, and then they do, they'll flip that and then get funded. Um, or otherwise, they will not be getting funded. Does that make any sense?
Well, I'm sure you have some areas, don't you?
That's it, everyone's on it too.
Uh, and we got some, I've got some too, but, um, if they use Hughes Net or, it, it's, Hughes Net usually doesn't work that well anyway.
That's a good question, yeah.
Because we got a lot of people out of Bothray and the Meadows, right, they're, all theirs are terrible.
They're promoting their, that's what I'm talking about.
Those things south of town are.
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Ricky.
Uh, uh, I'm not sure if the school district have a list of the kids that wasn't available to get on, uh, internet and all this, going COVID, they had to stay at home, but they should have a list of the areas where, where the kids wasn't able to get on, uh, if, maybe, maybe we need to reach out to them, and maybe they got a, a list of, and, and, and if they don't, then we can create a list, but they should already have a list of schools, uh, that couldn't get all that.
Yeah, what, what, what you can do is provide us with addresses. We can input the address into this map and see if it's showing underserved, served, or, uh, not served at all.
If you got a form, you just need them to co- call you.
They can call us and we can walk them through.
Do you know what underserved means?
We do the same with you guys, and it's gonna take a lot of, a lot of operation here.
What's the underserved? What's the, what level of internet service?
Uh, no service at all. No. Well, it's spe- based on speed, actually.
Yeah, it's the speed.
Yeah, it's, it's, it'll be a speed test, not be able to, you know, the, uh, criteria is there.
What number they need to call?
And call off the six oh one, four four six, six zero four four.
Okay.
And we can assist, if we can. Go ahead, Mr. Greg.
Uh, Mr. Bobby, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I need him, I need him to get off this, to check on the Safe Street and Road, uh, grant, the planning and just demonstration grant, and, uh, we can apply till August the twenty-ninth, and, and I don't think it has to go through the state, no match and nothing like that, that's what they have a look up here. So it's, that's the Safe Street and Road Grant, planning and demonstration grant.
That's a federal grant, Ricky?
Yeah.
Do you know?
Do you, anything about it?
He, he searched for the lesson. Thanks, Alan.
That's all I have.
Okay, uh, do you have a way to look into what he's asking about?
I have it.
Safe street, okay. Alright, he got the message, Ricky?
That's fair.
Yes. That's all you got. That's it? Alright, thank you.
First thing I have is a folder, the West forty-nine, West Wilderness Road, Great Lakes, Mayberry.
Maybe that's in the wrong file.
I said it on time. Both was up there, Kevin, it wasn't on file.
Oh, it was not in the file?
Yeah, it was right there. I said it.
You got anything on there?
I said it.
Okay, I'm sorry. We, we have got more stuff up here than that. Alright, is that the only one you have?
That's all I have.
Alright, it's four, dark, dark request for Frederick Mayberry at forty-nine twenty-one Wilderness Road. Moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion approved.
Other thing I have, Scott and Brad, we, uh, see, uh, he is, Scott, uh, thanks for a contact, we picked up to be in fact, if they're gonna go up, we'll have that in on, uh, twenty-ninth of this March, uh, he is from Scott.
Okay.
Uh, next thing I have, we're having a class, Miss Stephanie's meeting in class on, uh, July the twenty-third, it's a safe room. And when she gets through, we've got M dot coming to give us a, uh, lagging course, with M dot. We have that on the twenty-third, it's a safe room. Uh, the last thing I have is Ms. Whistler on Steam Plant Road, we, we're gonna, uh, take and record the information she had give us on, uh, access to the property for drainage. Uh, she had up a message Friday, um, uh, on the, what day on that, October fifth, November.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna receive what, we're not supposed to receive the documents and see what we got?
Well, we had our last meeting, everything she had, and we brought that through to record it, uh, at last meeting.
The man in the lunchroom, true.
They, yeah.
Except.
Correct.
It was.
So it was approved, and it was approved.
But I think before I give her update, I just wanna make sure that's where we were at, we were getting that document at the courthouse and then would give us some information.
Yeah, they were trying to file it.
Go ahead, do the work.
The deed is added, it wouldn't been filed, it was on the minutes?
Yeah, definitely.
Well, then it's good to go. If the deeds have been filed, if y'all, you wanna record the deed?
The deed on the Whistler.
The deed.
That was last, that was last, I need.
Do you, do you record today? Yeah.
That's all I have, what's.
So, Karen, I talked to Robbie, and, uh, over the weekend, they live on Jason Court. We got a, we got problems, they're on the road out there, they gonna take that, but they own property, and sister live on Swayze Road, that's your district, it's down there, King. So I told her I would give them, get in contact with you and Robbie, and she was looking until she said the other landlord died out, because the two of the landlords didn't own a public road. Now they, oh, once you said maybe want to look at it, and maybe turn it into a public road, it's one house back there to be created, but I know they'll have to go through the road, man. And he had to look at it and you, before you can accept it, but I wanted to bring it to you, and I gotta, I was looking up a phone, I'm in.
Yeah, have you been out there?
I have.
No, that's a very narrow road, isn't it? Uh, trees on both sides, frame fences on both sides.
Correct, and I have to get it up to the code, to the county code, to do that.
It's definitely gonna pull that off. So it needs to have oil back there.
Okay, that's all.
I just wanted to make sure I bring to y'all attention.
I will get admitted off and see what it is, but like, see if she'll have to get it up, but I get her to tow it off all the county.
Yeah, but I do that, and, and you know, we do have, I don't know what happened with, uh, Jason Court, so it's probably in the developers, the road is sinking in several places out there. I know we doing ditches out there, so I know we was waiting on an eight one one call, but I think it's twenty Jason Court, so if you look, and I, I was down there, so you don't have this one, it's several low places in there, so I think it's gonna be.
It's in front of down the middle of the road, on the road, it's gonna be silver, it's gonna be, well, it's all lined up on that, but that lady got that deal funny.
In the center, but this. This is in the front of her house right there.
They talking about Jason.
Jason Court, uh, she got, she got a big sink right in the front of her house, and it's there, but I told her we was out there, we'll check it out.
Okay, was that a Swayze or Miss, uh, Green?
Green.
Oh, a green, okay, okay.
This way, girl.
Uh, what was the name on the Whistler family on, uh, Steam Plant?
Jimmy Whistler?
It's, I know it's Peggy's.
Peggy.
Peggy with it. And, um, Greg, Peggy.
Greg.
And Peggy hit a gang.
Okay, Robbie, I've got an absentee form here for you, do you, or it need to be approved?
Yeah, need to be approved, that's the last, I was, I was gonna stick that, get my mom back to the desk.
Okay, I need a, uh, a motion to approve an absentee for Robbie Dollar on July the eleventh.
It was sick leave, wasn't it?
Yeah.
But it don't need approval.
Yeah.
Did not need it? Just a signature, okay.
If this is how it pays.
Thanks, Robbie.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, we're, 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 this, 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 uh, uh, for due to human resource, uh, yes, the young lady.
For what?
For sick leave.
No, I told the Senator Corvette, that's what our instruction department had sent him to Corvette.
Did you hear that? He, the department head is supposed to send him to Corvette.
I'm just waiting for that, the, uh, human resource lady to get, get a copy of whatever's going on with people, uh, going out to stink for them.
Okay, yeah, Paige will get it down where it needs to go when, when, after the meeting's over. Alright, farmer report.
Uh, good morning, Lord.
Morning.
Uh, we're, we're, we're real short. Um, we have a bid opening for SA two oh one, ten and hole them, um, in about eight minutes, so, uh, state engineers back there, uh, bearing front and outside of the envelope.
President, who is that speaking?
That's.
It's George Ford.
I am, that's George.
Okay.
We got bid opening here in, uh, about ten minutes. Alright.
George, try to speak up so that they can hear you.
Okay, um, still waiting on the activation documents for your four oh, so we can move that project to the next step, um, we can, I guess, reach out to M dot about where we are with the activation package, that's a bit, I can't officially do it, but I'm not.
Alright, where's, so, who can, who can call in? Scott?
That is.
Or Robbie, I don't.
On your.
Which one's gonna be the simplest? Okay, Scott, okay. You've been volunteering. Like, big fingers, huh?
Get a free one and write that back.
Uh, we're still working on designing the semi W P sites, uh, when this pay competing. Uh, we're still working on designing the semi-LVP sites, uh, we just paid competing all seven sites by the middle of May, August, and preparing them to bid by the end of August. Those state aid projects that we submitted the budget for a lot ago, still need, uh, what projects you would like close to program the roads. Uh, we did receive a letter, the county should receive the same letter, uh, extension letter, uh, about ninety thousand dollars for bridges. Um, that's just a typical letter that's, that state aid sends out to various counties, uh, each year, uh, for sending in unused bridge money. They put back into approval for those who may be short on the LVP funds, to allow them opportunity to bid on projects. We haven't talked, told the first to respond to the letter, and one of the way we can respond to is buy issue program. One of the available LVP bridges, um, you currently have four that are LSP, LSP eligible, um, that would be Jackson Point Road, uh, Roxy Road, Prospect Road, and Lower, Lower Water Bridge Road. Uh, I can send this list to you all, I can buy a pop to you all, stay as you. If you guys wanna use one of those roads, we can try to program those roads, and submit to state aid as a way of not losing that ninety thousand dollars, um, in LVP bridge funds.
Is ninety eight thousand dollars enough to fix any of those?
No, but what you can do, you still, they still recommend submitting, and if they can help, put additional funds to their project, they do. It's all about, you submitted, regardless, they can accept the rejection, and they accept, they will help fund whatever's short on there. We have about three hundred and three thousand dollars in LVP funds, so, they probably add to it, they accept the, accept the program of that bridge. I think it's better to submit than not to submit.
Is, is there any, any one of the bridges more important or more?
You saying Robbie's lower water and what, what's up?
You got Jackson Point Road, Roxy Road, Prospect Road, and Lower Water Bridge Road.
Jackson Point's gonna be the box though, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you any questions, Paul? Well, I see you gotta show it with the bill.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, yes. Okay. Um, any more department head reports? Yes.
Uh, the engineer, I need an email on what he was just saying, and I need an update on Morgan Down Road.
Do you have update on Morgan Down Road?
Or, the, the little thing I have is the last meeting I've been at, we were talking about possibly trying to find ways to add additional funds to the project, and find what, now that's, so, that's the last we were at.
Okay, could you send that to, uh, Ricky, when you emailed the?
I will do so.
The bridges we were just talking about, okay, okay, so, all right, he's gonna take care of it, Ricky?
Thank you.
All right.
Good morning, Lord, um, the airport, I'm just here to just kinda focus with y'all, I don't really have anything at this moment. Um, the grant that was signed and submitted to M dot has been approved and signed and back to the airport. Um, so, I do have a commission meeting this Thursday. Uh, discussing the match money on that grant, so, still working on that on my end, but here to answer any questions y'all may have.
Okay, Richard Nelson with the airport, uh, Ricky and Andrew. You got any questions for them?
Mr. President, I don't have no question, but, uh, uh, ask Mr. Nelson, on his way out, he give my, uh, 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 cell phone number, my account, his phone number from combat, I got something I need to send him?
Absolutely.
Okay, who said he'd do it?
All right.
All right.
Did y'all wanna discuss the match funds at all?
Yeah, that's what we needed to put that match on.
Okay.
Just contact from it.
Is that, last we talked about, like, they're gonna cut the trees down, generate about a hundred grand, and how the board wanna proceed? You know, basically, they.
With the hundred thousand.
They pay us back, or whatever, is that what, is that the?
Yeah.
I mean, we'll, we're, we're looking at any way we can solve or, or come up with the money for this on our own anyway. Um, if we could pay it off sooner, we'll take it off, or whatever, but, you know, we're to the point that I have to show that I have the money available, so, and that was part of the grant that I've signed, so.
Okay, uh, and it's two hundred thousand?
Yeah, it's, it's a one million dollar grant, eighty twenty, the state's gonna pay eighty percent, or eight hundred thousand, we'll pay two hundred thousand for the remaining.
Okay, so we can either, uh, borrow the money, and, and if we get the money off the timber, we'll throw that on the, the note, and?
The suggestion idea was that we'd use some of our ARPA money, and they would pay us back, first with the timber money, which would probably be generated before, before money's spent. So, they really would probably only be borrowing about a hundred thousand, but, they may need to, if something gets kicked off sooner, we front the money and get paid back, you know, I think that's what we talked about, is that right?
Okay, you know. Go ahead.
Let me ask a question, are he asking us, uh, two hundred thousand or one hundred dollars?
Two hundred.
It'll be two hundred initially, just to, to make sure that we're, uh, in line with what the grant needs.
Okay.
And I think the board said, then said, since they're gonna be cutting trees, they could then pay us back, with the tree cutting money.
Yeah.
So, they get a good start on paying us back on the, on, right away.
Yeah.
And then they're supposed to generate additional revenues of forty thousand dollars because of this, and so they should be able to pay us back fairly quick.
Right, and, and we're also pushing to raise the hangar rents starting October first, uh, due to the FAA wanting fair market value on all leases. So, that will also increase our revenue out there as well, so, I mean, we'll still have money being, we'll get back to you.
How's fuel sales?
Fuel sales are actually really good so far this month, we've sold over six thousand gallons of jet fuel this month. Uh, we normally sell about five thousand a month, and we sold six thousand this month.
Is, has the FAA ever made a ruin of the little lake that's out there, and what we're gonna do about that?
Uh, they, they're working on it, uh, they reached out for a deed for the property, and, um, I look for that to be coming out here in the near future, but that's the same leases that they're telling me I have to do fair market value on all leases. So, that's actually the lease out there at the airport, I'm having to do fair market value on.
Okay. Okay, is that all you had?
That's all I got, and I shall have some.
All right.
Do you feel comfortable making the grant, Alan?
Yes, I've already made it, it's already signed and approved, it's already.
Y'all wanna prove that, that for?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, put up two hundred thousand, uh, the airport will pay us back a hundred thousand on timber cut, and then we'll finance the rest of a hundred thousand, they'll pay our period of, hopefully, three years, uh, to get that cleared up.
All right, motion by Mr. Middleton. Uh, to, to, that, this is to fund the airport, the two hundred thousand. And, uh, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Uh, any opposed? All right, so I have a motion period. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rick.
I'll give Ricky's information.
We, uh, have a ten o'clock, uh, bid opening. Have you got those, Mr.? Oh, okay. Ready when you are.
Who is this guy?
Uh, this is the bid opening.
Uh, M dot.
M dot. They're, they're walking up to the podium now.
Good afternoon, this is the bid opening, uh, Adams County State Aid Project number zero one, ten and whole M, uh, we have two bidders, those being, uh, traffic control products, and lane line, uh, ALC.
All right, I'm gonna open product, open on SAP zero one ten M, the estimate on that job is one twenty eight, eight twenty seven, twenty five. One twenty eight, eight twenty seven, twenty five. First bidder I'm gonna open is, uh, traffic control products of Brandon, Mississippi. The paper responsibility is zero six one, zero six zero seven nine. Bid bond is with travel's casualty insurance, it is four or five percent of the bid. And this, engineer appears to be in order. The non-collusion affidavit filled out and signed, the EV certification is filled out and signed. The proposal is signed, and their bid is two hundred and seventeen, seven hundred forty five thirty. Two one seven, seven, seven four five thirty.
All right.
The other bidder we have.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what are these bids for?
Striking projects.
It is for a, the state aid product, uh, SAP zero one ten M, which is a striking project.
State aid striking project, which road?
Arkin Road.
Arkin Road.
Lower Woodville Road.
Lower Woodville.
And Kingston.
And Kingston.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next bidder is Lane Line of Lowood, Mississippi, the paper responsibility is seventeen, four seventy four. The bond is, the, the bond, the bond is with, uh, is for five percent of the bid, is with travel's casualty insurance. And, it appears to be in order. The proposal is signed, the EV certification is filled out and signed, non collusion affidavit is filled out and signed. And their bid is one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty seven dollars and eighty nine cents. One one six, three six seven, eighty nine. And that is all the bids we have, y'all will take it under five, then I can give them, let you know.
Take it under five. We're gonna take it under five. Uh, Ricky, and Angela, is y'all here to bid?
Mr. President, I have a hundred and sixteen thousand, a hundred and forty eight thousand, and two hundred and seventeen thousand, um, trying to pick out, get the person that bid is the two hundred and seventeen thousand, was he bidding on the same thing, that other two was bidding on?
They were.
The other, Ricky, two, uh, one twenty eight is engineer's estimate, that was not bid.
Yeah, they're look reviewing those bids to make sure everything's in order.
Yeah.
That's why they're asking to take it under five.
We're gonna take, they're gonna take it under five. Have y'all got, y'all have a copy to see, you want me to take a picture of it and send it to y'all, so y'all have it?
Yo, I can't, for the low up to two, I, 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 we got two bids, three.
Two bids, the first thing you heard was one twenty eight, eight twenty seven, twenty five, and that was the, the engineer's, uh, what, what they thought it would be, and then the first bid, okay, was two seventeen, the second was one sixteen. Oh, okay, just wasn't sure y'all could hear. All right, thank you. All right, um.
Mr. President, I, can I?
Go, go ahead.
Um, I, I'd like to make an announcement, um, Mr. James Biglan passed away this morning. One of the kindest, most selfless gentlemen I've ever met, um, his impact on this community will be felt for a very long time, and at this time, I'd like to have a moment silently.
Appreciate you letting us know that, you know, um, you never know when the last time you're gonna get to see somebody is, and I, I remember talking to Mr. Biglan, it doesn't seem like it was more than three or four weeks ago, man, 'cause I'd always seen him there picking up lunch on Fridays, but he was a really generous, and he was a good man, I always, I always liked him, considered him a good friend. Anybody else, uh, wanna say anything, you're welcome to.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I can, uh, compare with what y'all saying, uh, Mr. Biglan, the Biglan family, they always be the pillar of community, uh, I knew this Biglan personally, and, uh, my friends go down to the Biglan family, definitely, yes.
Amen. Go ahead.
I, I'm Mr. Biglan, uh, probably over thirty years, ever since I've been working with the county, I got this off him through, uh, supervisor, uh, Wes and supervisor Campbell. Um, like I said, he has been one of the most kindest men I've ever known, um, never, never, a man that would say no to me, pretty much. Um, so, I do wanna send my sympathy and prayers to his family, and, um, everyone who's a part of him, I, he's gonna be really missed, like I said, thank you.
Yeah, certainly.
All right.
That somber note, I guess we're gonna move on, um, we're all, any more department heads? Share, share, for you to laugh?
I'm gonna come up there so they can see what y'all have.
Okay. You must be gonna ask for money or something.
I do that.
He absolute.
This guy is getting the crown. He's got them.
Uh, my heart goes out to Mr. Biglan as well, I can't tell you how much he's helped me in the Adams County Sheriff's Office over the years. One thing about him, he didn't see color, brace, or anything like that, he was a straight shooting man, and, and no matter where you was at, financially, spiritually, or whatever, he treated you like he would treat his own, so, um, he would definitely be missed. Speaking of that, I do wanna say something before I get all off into this. You know, we've had a bunch of incidents happen over the last eighteen years, for political reasons, and I know everybody's read the paper, and seen everything, uh, that happened over the weekend, and it's continuing to happen right now. And I'm asking the public to, to dial it back again. You know, it's not a joke when you have to have the Secret Service and FBI come to visit you, because of remarks you're making on social media, threats you're making. At the end of the day, we have a civic duty to get out and vote. You don't need to be bullying people, you definitely don't need to be sending death threats to people, uh, on social media, by any other means. So, I'm asking everybody to remember who you are, remember your character, remember the civility that you were raised with, and keep it between the lines, and just simply go vote for the candidate that you're choosing. But all these threats that I'm seeing, even the death threats that's coming behind the stuff from yesterday, it needs to cease, because I promise you, whether we short on manpower or not, we will be knocking at your door along with the Secret Service and the FBI. So, that's my public service announcement, that everybody who's making these undue threats, just know that we're seeing it, people are documenting it, they're sending it to us, and you're currently going on an investigation right now as we speak.
That's, all that is not gonna change anybody's vote.
No.
And, 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 that's, that's the way to do it, if you don't like somebody that's running.
Yeah.
Then vote for the other candidate, and that's, that's, that's pretty simple, that's the way, that's the American way, and that's the way we should do it.
That's the way it needs to stick, vote for who you want. Uh, can the supervisor online here repeat the way I'm at?
Doctor Gaines.
All right, I'm gonna start with you all's trash reports first, it's gonna be low, because we've been working on a lot of projects, and we have two of our trash vehicles currently down, but, south wind, let's see here. District one, thirteen bags, district two, twenty bags, district three, thirty five bags, district four, fourteen bags, and district five, uh, fourteen bags, that's a total of ninety six bags outside. That's a total of ninety-six bags outside of the county. From your, from the bags we picked up at the courthouse, we got, we have fifty-three bags from over there, six bags in justice court, and thirty-three bags from the sanitation department. Now, I don't know, um, I don't know if the public realizes or not, but we had the National Institute of Direction come in for three days last week. And I can't tell you all how invaluable those, those three days were of training that we received in reference to the process of wanting to try to build a new law complex or facility. And we invited, we invited, we invited Pike County over, and we, and several of the supervisors came, several of the judges, the county administrators showed up, county attorneys showed up, the chancellor clerk showed up, and there's a lot, a lot of different folks showed up throughout the community as well, like Strandgul, and of course, Ms. Debbie Hudson Jeremy, who's back there as well. And it was eye-opening to the point to where Pike County, who had already started their building process, um, had been approved to start it, they stopped it. They stopped it because of what they learned that they didn't know from this training. They got up, walked out the meeting, went and stopped the process, and then came back to the meeting to learn more. It was an extremely eye-opening thing for me as well, and I'm sure it was for Ms. Jeremy, who's welcome to speak, if she wants to speak with me on this, on this, but we learned a lot. But the main two things we learned that needs to happen is, we really need to get a needs assessment done. We can talk about, or not talk about building a facility all we want, the last thing those people said to us, you were their supervisor, Gaines, is the cost doesn't go the other way. Meaning that it will never get cheaper, it's something that you're gonna have to do eventually anyway, but it's better to do it sooner than later because your costs will continue to rise. You know, facilities that they quoted years ago have probably tripled their price right now because of the price of concrete and construction and things of that nature. And so hearing that, the other thing that we got from that is how important the soil testing is. It doesn't matter if somebody gave you land, or whether you purchased it or whether the county already owns it or not. You really need to have those soil testing done to see whether or not it's suitable to build on, not only the soil, but the location in regards to other utilities and things of that nature. But a lot of good stuff came out of it, and you don't know what you don't know until somebody shows you what you don't know. And even me having been researching and looking at this for nine years now, yes, nine years, looking at this, I learned a ton in that meeting. To the point to where I'm here this morning, and I'm gonna ask the board for two things this morning. I'm gonna ask the board, will they use Harper funds to purchase the soil system and to do a needs assessments to see what all we really need to be pointing towards? Now, this is not a short-term thing, that needs assessment, that needs assessment takes at least to a minimum four months to do. And Harper, opera funds, am I saying that right, opera funds? Okay, American Recovery Act, then, I'm getting, I don't wanna get too technical, American Recovery Act, they can be used for law enforcement purposes. And so I'm asking the board to do this, to make sure that, that we're going towards the right league. For Pike County to get up and walk out and realize everything that they had planned needed to be changed in a meeting that's already approved. That was, that was eye-opening, because we all picked up on so much, and things changed, and here's the thing about Pike County. Pike County, Pike County just had built another jail in nineteen ninety-seven, but it was done wrong. And so now, here they are again in twenty twenty-four, ready to build a new law enforcement complex because the one they did was wrong. I don't want that to happen to us, whether you afford a jail or not, but I do want factual, unbiased data, and that's what we're asking the board to do. This is not money that anybody budgeted for, this is money that the government gave for whatever the board chooses to use it for. But I'm asking the board, Supervisor Gray and Supervisor Hutchins, y'all there too? I'm asking the board, will they pay for this needs assessment? I have the needs assessments in front of me, and Supervisor Gray and Supervisor Hutchins, I've already emailed it, I'm, well, I texted to both of you all, and I'm gonna pass it to the ones in the room to look at, because the needs assessment is, is sixty-eight thousand dollars. Normally a needs assessment runs seventy-five, and if I'm not mistaken, I'll look back in here and see what the two proposals are for, for the soil testing. But I'm asking you all, I'm asking the board to, to do this because it needs to be done. Cause I know some of you feel like we don't need a facility, some of you feel like we don't need to house more than what we're capable of, uh, of certain capacity, and some don't want extra, whatever that is, this data will tell us exactly where we need to be. I know people think because you have a hundred and ten seats, that that means that you fill a jail up. What we've learned is optimal operating capacity should be at eighty-five percent. Meaning just because you have a hundred and ten beds don't mean you need to fill them up, because that's not optimal based on the staff. But the data won't lie, the data won't lie, so I'm asking the board to vote on this, and I'm gonna pass this out to you all today, and I, I am asking the board to vote on it. So I, I'll give the floor on that part, if y'all have any questions from this morning.
May I add just?
Yes.
In consideration of the needs assessment, it provides twenty years out, and in five-year increments, it, uh, does your location, your size. They, uh, consider staff and the training, because your staff changes when your facility changes. So all of those are in consideration, and all these people that do a needs assessment have been in the process for years in their different capacities, so um, we can't go any further really until we know where we're going. And, um, I'm glad we kind of, we did this process of, of having this training. It helped us to open our eyes to what we needed to do, not rush the process, but be diligent, because the longer we wait, the more it'll cost at the end of the day, so. They also, one other thing not to say great things about the CJCC Council, but they did, they were extremely, um, um, I don't know what the word is, but they congratulated us that we had started that, because in doing that, you've already started a process of putting the right people together, that this complex is gonna be a, so, um, I'm glad we did that, just, just, it just takes so long. Cause I'm very anxious as everybody is to, to get on with this.
Oh, the, the biggest question I get around town is how are we gonna pay for this, and, and what is it gonna be the cost? Some, some idea what the cost is, you know, and how are you, but how are we gonna pay for it?
It's gonna be either taxes or, or, uh, something else, but you're never gonna just go anywhere, we don't know, that's why, you can't move with this until you get a needs assessment.
And that's, that's what we need. That's why we need the needs assessment, so we'll know what we need so we can get an accurate cost on whatever that is.
And then go the next step to find out different ways to pay for that.
Go ahead, Mr. Gray.
Uh, how much is the need assessment of sixty-eight thousand?
Yes, sir, sixty-eight thousand. Sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. And what it covers is, uh, the pre-kickoff planning, kickoff interviews, stakeholders, it, it'll not, it analyzes the entire criminal justice system, not just the, not just the jail, but the courts, the, the, the attorneys, the, the prosecutors, the DA, it, it analyzes everything to give you alternatives to what may work better, and tell you what kind of facility or whatever your county needs to help that cost.
They also do past ten years.
They go back ten years.
To see what.
Okay, uh, Mr. President.
Yes.
This question is to Mr. Stephanie or Scott or whoever, uh, do we have enough money, I know we have enough money, uh, in that, in that account. Uh, so, from what I heard, when I was there, and what happened to Pike, Pike County, and they rushed into it, they didn't do it right. They built a facility on the second half in nineteen ninety-seven. I, I, I think, uh, we can get this right, so I'm gonna make a motion that we get that money out of this, I, uh, took, uh, sixty-eight thousand to fund a need assessment. That's my motion.
Okay, does that also cover the, uh, soil?
No, that's just the needs test, the needs assessment. The soil is something different, the soil, by the looks of it here, you got two poles here, you got, oh, fifty-nine thousand, five hundred on one, and fifty-four thousand on the other. And, and I'm not sure if, if they can do it or not, our engineer, I don't mean to be pointing at you, but I don't know if they, if there's something they can do or not. Do y'all do soil testing?
Oh, we have a company here, we sell.
Is it burns and, do the?
I'd like to get a positive of them too as well.
Well, we got a motion on the floor for the needs assessment.
Okay, well, there's, there's two assessments, one for fifty-four and one for.
Mr. President, you got a motion on the floor.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out what the motion is exactly, or are we doing it all together, or we just doing a needs assessment?
He just asked for a needs assessment.
I'm asking for the needs assessment, we can deal with that first.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gray, um, use the, um, CARES Act money, sixty-eight thousand dollars, is that right?
Sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, yes, sir.
Sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred.
Seven hundred and sixty.
For a needs assessment. Need a second?
Well, second, we're discussing.
Second from Mr. Gaines, discussion.
So, my question, I mean, I, I went to the meeting too, so, doing a needs assessment don't put you in a position where you're saying you're finna build a jail. Needs assessment puts you in a position to figure out how you're going forward, uh, what's gonna be better for the community, it's, it's not, it's not moving forward, so I don't wanna, a misunderstanding, say, hey, we finna build a jail, raise people taxes and do this. It's an assessment of your old jail, it's a assessment of your, uh, possibility of a new jail. Uh, it's not just say, hey, you going for a building a jail, what they do is come in the community and look at the community, looking at your old facility, look at your new, uh, facility, look at your possible stakeholders, look at, uh, three or four different, uh, possible ways, the best way to build it. I know they had about four, four, I made, they had like four different ways, with, uh, some of them was options for private people to pay for it, and then they paid back. Uh, it just had a bunch of different options, so this is not obligated or anything, but what a need was, and I think, uh, Judge, I didn't see Judge Gray, but I seen Judge Blackwell, uh, several days down there, and, uh, they were saying how important it was, uh, and I made it down there, cause Pike County at, at the last, in June at the coast, that they was in, they was approved by the bill of jail, they was in the middle of building a jail, they didn't do a needs assessment. Now they're getting a facility that, to finish starting a, I think, thirty-something million dollar facility that won't fit their needs. So now they had to call, they walked out of the meeting, called supervisor, say, hey, we need to shut this down right now, so doing a needs assessment, I want to make sure that's clarified, so everybody knew, doing a needs assessment, not putting anybody at risk, or not saying, hey, we finna push up on taxes, cause from my understanding, even after the needs assessment, it's probably a six-year period, five to six-year period, with, if, if you do move forward, getting everything going, it's not a, a overnight thing to say we finna build a jail right now. A year for a couple of years.
Okay, any more discussion?
Uh, not on the needs assessment.
All in favor? Any names? One name.
Appreciate you, board.
Mr. President.
Most secure, go ahead.
What was the vote?
Uh, four to one.
Thank you.
All right, the next item we have on here is, as you all know, we're in the age of technology, and we spend a lot of money on evidence dot com to run body cameras, uh, to make sure our tasers, our per property document every time we utilize them, and, and we, we asked the board permission to seek a grant. And the grant, the purpose of the grant is, we're coming up for renewal with evidence dot com, and all this stuff is financed over five years. And so what I asked Ms. Lynette Smith to do is to seek out a grant to where we can purchase all this stuff again before this renewal, and also get in-car cameras. And the reason why I say that is, you know, when body cameras came out, they was a new, fresh thing on the market, and everybody loved them, but if you, if you're actual law enforcement officer, you get to fight with somebody, or you get to tussle with somebody, body cameras gone off, and sometimes you don't get the whole story. So in order to get the whole story, we wanna go to in-car cameras as well. And so I asked her to seek out a grant that will renew evidence dot com, will pay for the storage, storage is the most expensive thing. Uh, it will get us new body cameras, because over time, as technology changes, they get obsolete, and, and you can't even upload it because of how old they are, tasers and in-car cameras. So she put in for, and I don't want these numbers to scare y'all, because we're already close to them anyway, what she put in for is seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar grant. Seventy, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars, two hundred and five dollars and eleven cent grant, which comes with a fifty percent match. And the match is three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and two dollars and fifty-five cents. And so what I'm asking the board to do is approve us going after this grant, because, just because you asked for this much, that it's being, you don't get it. And even if you don't have the funding to match it, you can still reduce the grant. Now, what we're hoping by the end, by this time for these grants are not, they, they're long-term, we're hoping we have that funding in from the C's funds. But I'm asking for permission for Ms. Smith to go ahead and go after this funding, so that we can, so that we can try to get some money from the government. I'm asking permission to go after this grant.
What'd you say the match was?
The match, if you got, if they, if they awarded you the match, would be three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and two, two dollars and fifty-five cents. But again, we're very close to that now, what we have, cause we financed it over, over a period of five years. The only difference that hits when we love them is we add car cameras, which, car camera, they tell, they tell the unbiased story, and in today's time, you need the unbiased story totally.
So it'd be eighty thousand dollars a year in your budget?
Roughly, yes.
Oh, you're asking.
Hold on, hold on, but let me, let me back up, a lot of that is startup cost too now, because you purchasing some new equipment in there, so it won't be that much, it won't be that much each year.
We'd have to come up with a long sum for a good bit of it.
Yeah, I had to, I had to budget for it, but we already paid close to that now, we are very close there right now with it. With the tasers, with the body cameras and the storage, we are not far off in that already.
Your answer, go ahead, go ahead.
So basically, we not, all you wanna do is apply for the grant, because it's, it's not guarantee how much you'll get if you'll get it, and that you asking for, if possible, if you do get the match, what the match is, there's a possibility that you might not get awarded, and if you do get awarded, it might be less. So that don't tie to any obligation for you to apply for it, cause we don't have the money, of course, we couldn't do that.
That is, that is correct, and most of the time, you competing against the rest of the country. So what you ask for is not knowing what you get. You gonna, they gonna break it down, and they'll sort of divide it between fifty or a hundred agencies, depending on how many actually was applied and awarded. That's why I say we asking for that, but that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean they can get that part.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that you, uh, that you allow Lynette Smith to apply for the grant.
Motion for Mr. Gaines, need a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Gray, any more discussion?
Just, uh, Sheriff, just for clarification, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars includes what?
That includes your tasers, your body cam, it, it includes paying for storage for, for five years for evidence dot com, and it includes. and it includes, uh, the, the camera systems going in the cars and installation, it includes everything. That's everything.
But you don't know the figure now of what we're paying for tasers and body cameras?
I don't know it right off, but I can give it to you, I know it's very close to this financially to you, so I can give it to you though. I don't know it, but I know it's very, very close, cause right now, we don't have.
I think in-car cameras are a great asset.
Well, you seen.
In today's world.
You seen how many officers been shot in the last couple of years, and if it wasn't for in-car cameras, you wouldn't have that full story right now. So some of them been shot through their body cameras.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
Uh, boy, I just wanna tell you all, I appreciate you all for being open-minded and making the decision you made today. It's like the supervisor Gaines said, it's not obligating anybody, but your people perish from lack of knowledge. And this needs assessment is gonna give us the knowledge that we need to decide what way we need to go, that's gonna be based on facts. So I just wanna thank y'all for doing that this morning, and I also wanna thank y'all for, thank you all for, and I'm gonna go after this body grant, this body camera and car grant, from evidence dot com that I asked for. That's all I have. I just wanna say a thank y'all, appreciate y'all.
Sure.
You got something for me, you got a little.
Appreciate you two online as well.
Okay, any more departmental reports? Yes.
All right, we went back, we verified the bid for SAP O one, ten to O M, project on the project.
Yes.
And we, uh, verified the bids, and the lowest bidder, we have a lane line LLC, in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. And so there's our recommendations for board to award that project to Lane Line LLC.
I'll make a motion to award the, uh, the bid to Lane Line LLC.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Gaines to, uh, accept the bid from Lane Line LLC. Uh, Ricky and Angela, did y'all hear, uh, what Mr. Ford said?
He accepted the lowest bid, right?
He's, 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 he's looked at him, and that's the one he's asking us to go ahead and accept. Or recommend it, I'm sorry. And I got a motion by Mr. Gaines, I need a second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries.
Second item I have is the board, Mr. Gray, for the project, and so we request the board authorization to allow the board president to sign the board order. We all see this right here.
So. Uh, motion on authority, sign, sign or order, uh, moved by Mr. Gaines, I need a second, so I can sign the order.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussions? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries.
Just make sure that page has the advertisement and everything on that.
You want me to go ahead and sign that? You bring it around, pass it around. Did you have anything else, Mr. Ford, sign it? Any more departmental reports? All right, uh, Mr. Flovert, the, uh, World Energy, we're gonna do, uh, item for, to be determined?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um. Any public comments? Okay, um, Wes, I'll turn it over to you for a few minutes for this last item.
Most people just read it.
That house?
You got a bunch of news, probably public theories coming up.
Do you wanna go ahead and do those?
You talking about this?
Take care of this real fast.
Okay.
Okay. We started. You talking about the, you talking about sample one?
Nah, he said, you don't step out.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Granny was on the agenda, he don't step out.
I'm gonna turn it here and wait up.
Ms. Granny?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, my name is Millicent Granny, I'm a resident of Adams County. When I was here last month, we discussed the status of the proposed landfill and the application of complete oilfield disposal. Mr. Gaines, you said that you needed more information on the proposed landfill, and Mr. Millicent, you expressed that, that we had a true understanding of the scope and requirements of this project. So I listened to your concerns, and I contacted Mississippi State University, and was given the name of Dr. Dennis Truax. Dr. Truax is a licensed professional engineer, and is award certified nationally as an environmental engineer and a water resources engineer. He has worked on projects throughout the world, including the designs of water and wastewater treatment systems, and hazardous and solid waste facilities. His academic career spans forty-one years as school director, department head, research center director, and professor in civil and environmental engineering at Mississippi State University. Dr. Truax recently completed a term as president of the American Society of Civil Engineers. I sent Dr. Truax a copy of Complete Oilfield Disposal's application, and asked him for his professional opinion regarding the application, and I shared your concerns with Dr. Truax. Uh, I would like to read his letter. I am writing it this time to summarize my review of the documents you provided relative to the subject facilities. Those document, documents consisted of a letter dated March the twentieth, twenty twenty-four, from Miss Amy Blunt of Complete Oilfield Disposal LLC, to Miss Brandy Lewis, Adams County Administrator, forwarding a copy of the applicant request form per amendment to the local solid waste management plan with attachments. The completed form as provided by Miss Blunt, the demonstration of need attachment to the form and exhibit eight, topographical wide triangle map with a proposed location of the complete oilfield disposal site, and geoportal map of the area of undefined origin, which has a disclaimer by Adams County as to its accuracy, completeness, or relativity. A letter dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, to Complete Oilfield Disposal LLC from Mr. Warren Gaines, president of the Adams County Board of Supervisors, providing on behalf of the board a certificate, certification of compliance with the local land use and zoning requirements of the location for a thirty-six acre type one industrial landfill facility proposed by Complete Oilfield Disposal LLC. A memorandum of certification dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, from Mr. Robert Bradford Senior, flood clean manager for the Adams County Emergency Management Agency, indicating the proposed Complete Oilfield Disposal Project Site is not in a special flood hazard area in Adams County. As a reminder as to why you referred to me regarding this project, I have been licensed as a professional engineer in Mississippi for forty-four years. My three degrees are in civil engineering with special, specialization in environmental and water resources engineering. As a result, in part, I also maintain national credentials as a board certified environmental engineer and a board certified water resources engineer. During my forty-one years on the faculty at Mississippi State University, I was part of a research group supporting the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality in developing rules, regulations, and programs related to solid waste management, the Mississippi Solid Waste Reduction Assistance Program, hazardous waste management, the Mississippi Technical Assistance Program, and stormwater regulations. I've worked with the Mississippi Department of Health, serving as chair of the On-Site Wastewater Advisory Council. In my university, in my university position, I also provide technical expertise on projects related to waste management in China and Tanzania. During the same period but unrelated to my university position, I consulted on solid waste management in several counties in Mississippi. These activities included the siding, design, and management of municipal, municipal solid waste landfill, development of numerous solid waste management plans, development of recycling programs, and providing review of landfill design and operation to optimize land use and minimize risk to account. Regarding the documentation summarized above, in addition to you, I have spoken to other engineers, representatives of M D E Q, representatives of Waste Management Incorporated, and a real estate agent. Following my review of the documents and these conversations, I offer the following observations. One, there is little if any need for this facility in Adams County now or in the foreseeable future. The Plantation Oaks landfill operated by Waste Management Incorporated and located near the proposed facility has approximately fifty years of capacity already permitted. As such, the primary advantage of having a second commercial landfill in the county at geographically separate locations is lost. If in a different location, the county could benefit from improved vehicle safety, reduced wear on roads, lower waste hauling costs, et cetera. Waste management has in place the infrastructure needed to manage oilfield waste, and they have demonstrated the technical competency to comply with all state and federal regu, regulations to deal with receiving, processing, and disposing of the solids and the wastewater generated by the, by the treatment process. The existing facility has the laboratory testing protocols in place to assure compliance of landfilling of these and other wastes. Finally, they have the permits and financial assurance documentation needed in place for this type of operation. In reviewing the form and its attachments, there is no indication that a qualified professional prepared it. Based on my investigation, Miss Blunt is a licensed real estate agent in Louisiana. I can find no indication that any of the information provided was developed by a qualified professional. I have confirmed that real estate agents are advised to get filed such forms as a matter of professional ethics. I am not suggesting that Miss Blunt is practicing engineering, as the documentation provided falls short of that standard. And there is nothing in the documentation to assert that she is an engineer or qualified in any way to provide the information in the documentation. Number three, the determination needs incomplete and less than accurate. For example, there are not siding specifications. How large of a facility buffer will be used? How will stormwater be managed? How will leachate and processed wastewater be managed? Is the soil suitable for a landfill? How will it respond to the landfill placed upon it? What is the depth of groundwater in the area? Does groundwater depth meet regulatory requirements? It indicates that a twenty-acre landfill is to be permitted, producing one point five million cubic yards of design capacity. It is to account for cover volume too and does not. However, the optimum geometry of such a landfill would have to be over eighty-five feet above the prevailing ground, unless the plan is to excavate into the existing soil. If acceptable soil is in place, this could be lowered, but what operational requirements for operating cells such as leachate, such as leachate collection, liners, piping, cell size, and top, et cetera, reduces the usable volume up to fifty percent. Operationally, it is suggested that the twenty-acre landfill be operated in one to two acre segments. The construction complexity for eighty foot, eighty-five foot deep facility means that the useful space of the landfill will be reduced more, making it even taller. And the potential for cell failure and release of contaminants is increased, posing a risk to the adjacent landowners and the public. It correctly acknowledges that the waste they propose to receive is highly variable in nature. However, the calculations presented in section B and exhibit A of the document are incomplete at best and grossly misleading at worst. On face value, they suggest that adding a solid and a slurry reduces volume. This is physically impossible. It does not suggest what the solid is or the slurry is in content. Volume reduction would be achieved by creating a substantial liquid fraction that requires separate permits and treatment. The document ignores this significant waste management issue. There are only a few ways to manage this liquid waste, giving the high potential for radioactive and hazardous chemicals. One is to treat the water on-site and dispose of it at the Nash's Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is a tricky proposition, but possible. However, while the Plantation Oaks landfill has a pre-treatment permit and the facilities that allow for such disposal, they elect to protect the community and the public-owned treatment works by shipping the water off to a deep well injection site. Such a site might be possible in the proposed site, but extensive subsurface investigations are needed to a depth of twenty thousand to over thirty thousand feet, as well as the design of a high-pressure injection system and spill containment. This would have to be pressure inspected and evaluated regularly. There is no proposed justification for the facility having a disposal capacity over twenty years. The calculations, suspect as they are, do not justify that part of the document. However, it does note that the waste is hazardous enough that it must be tracked from cradle to grave, and that the liability for landfilling this waste will reside with the owner of the property. The permitting process will require financial assurance that there will be resources made available during the operation and after the closure of this, this, of this facility, excuse me, of this facility. These requirements are substantial, as they require enough funds to completely deconstruct the landfill and move it to an alternative location. I found nothing in the document as how this guarantee of tens of millions of dollars was to be provided for in perpetuity. I would hate to see the county, I would hate to see the county end up with a liability. There are several ways suggested that liability will be limited by this operation, commenting on some of these, transportation of material. With the Plantation Oaks landfill in the area, to site another landfill in this area would only increase truck traffic from US Highway sixteen one. If anything, using the waste management facility would allow consolidating leachate waste and reduce traffic. Minimize the disposal locations. Like the math used in volume reduction, I fail to see how duplicating an existing permitted proven landfill operation minimizes anything. Future capacity, again, the documentation calculates this site will only be viable for approximately twenty years or less. The Plantation Oaks landfill would have thirty additional years or more of capacity if they accepted all of the proposed waste, assuming the proposal estimates are accurate in some way. Waste reduction, this would be a program implemented at the origin of the waste if it were to have real impact, and this facility would have little to do with it. The reduction strategies that could be employed at this facility are already in place at the existing landfill facility. While the site is currently zoned for agricultural use, I assume Adams County will rezone the area and tax accordingly, given it would be an industrial site that can transfer major liability to the county. The document indicates that the facility is designed specifically to take these waste types. Their waste handling techniques include chemical, mechanical, gravity separation, and filtration processes that significantly improve waste stabilization. Stabilization and the list of treatment process are not the relevant issue, and the lack of details make it suspect as to what level this facility is designed. The issues are solification and leachate management, stormwater management, monitoring well systems, and much more. Providing this level of detail would help assure the citizens of Adams County that this facility will be something they can support, that they can support rather than fear. To conclude, it is my impression that there are several issues that have yet to be resolved. Speaking with other engineers and representatives of M D E Q, they have comparable questions and opinions to mine and more. I suspect a basic site evaluation and preliminary design by a qualified professional would help address some or all of these issues. But at this point, it appears that, and my granddad always said in cases like this, you're being asked to buy a pig in the poker. You asked me to be brief, I tried. You asked me to leave the engineering classroom and writing, I tried. Land disposal of waste is a process that can endanger the health, safety, and welfare of the public. It is technically complex. It is technically complex and must meet challenging regulations, reviews, and hearings. I hope I have not felt too badly and misprovised the background needed. I truly would hate to see the board of supervisors and the citizens of Adams County go in the long way on this issue. In conclusion, we have learned that these are not unfounded fears by a couple of residents in the county. I know Mr. Gaines, you've received numerous phone calls. And I'm here today with other landowners in the county that are worried about this facility. These are not unfounded fears, they're legitimate concerns. The potential hazards associated with this type of landfill could have significant negative impacts for the surrounding landowners, the church, St. Catherine Creek Wildlife Refuge, and the home of children, Mississippi Rivers. I am asking that this project be located on an industrial property. I've been asking you that since October, I mean, November of last year. And this needs to be located somewhere up in Adams County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm not understanding, I didn't get, the beginning of that, uh, uh, give you a letter, so I'm gonna make a motion to make that letter part of the meeting.
Yes, sir. Got a motion, can I have your second?
Say it.
Second, my supervisor Gaines, any discussion?
He want, yeah, discussion. He want, he wanted to make your letter a part of the man's assembly.
Okay.
Cause he's out there, he could, he could be, okay.
All right, all in favor? Uh, all opposed? I say no.
Thank you. Thank you for your inspiration.
All right.
Oh, is he back there?
All right, what we got next, though?
Mr. President, if we could do, Ricky, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Can we do a public hearings on various missed properties? But these are mostly Ricky's.
Oh, motion to do, public, go into public hearing?
Yes, sir, I'll call out the properties. It's three twenty-nine Southmore Drive, ten Dogwood, twenty-one twenty-nine Second Street, one oh four Barth Street, two hundred Broadmore Drive, fifteen Raffin Circle, twenty-eight Greenwood Subdivision Road, one oh nine Mimosa Drive, fourteen Prince Edition Road, and one oh four Hensley Road. Is there anyone here for those public hearing? Anyone here for any of those properties? Anyone here on those public properties?
I wanna think two hundred Broadmore Drive has been cleaned up.
I, I think so, that's gonna be my next question.
Ma'am, what's, what's house?
She look at three forty last night.
Okay, there's a couple of them that come.
Okay, that's a house beside you. Okay, I saw that the other day, I visited somebody up there, thirty-one, I think.
I'm scared.
Yeah, it was a, yeah, it was a pretty good mess. Okay.
Ma'am, where do you live?
I live across, that bit, that bit.
You live across the street from tw- three twenty-nine? And what's your name? And what does it look like?
Came here.
You're gonna, you need to stand up and put on podium, sorry, I'm putting on.
He's not, he's not gonna be able to hear from the podium.
Yeah, he doesn't hear.
She was describing how bad, uh, three twenty-nine, uh, Southmore Drive is and I, I can confer with her on that, uh, uh, cause I was out there the other day visiting, uh, or dropping something off to somebody, the next door neighbor as a matter of fact, and I, I thought, this is terrible. Yes, ma'am, could you, uh, tell us your name again so she can put it on the record?
Robbie Fulton.
Is it O-B-D-I?
O-B-D-I-E.
Fulton.
Gayler Fulton.
And your address?
Three thirty Southmore Drive.
All right, Scott.
And so it's indeed of what? What, cut, cutting vegetation?
Trees, grass, the, you can't see the house, I mean, it's, it's.
Is there trash?
It's, the yard is, the, the whole lot.
The yard's three and a half foot deep in grass and there's, uh,
Trees, limbs of, all, all out in the yard.
When's the last time was it cleaned up, you think?
That's a good question. Probably over, over, one year time. Probably over two years.
Over two years. The board needs to set a reasonable time for the landowner to clean it up and then after that, the county can do that. The wall's kind of been real emphasized on that this past term.
Two weeks or?
Two weeks sounds probably the time, if in two years and ain't done anything.
All right, fourteen days, it's not cleaned up, the county will clean it up and we'll charge it back.
Four, four, I want to do that, but.
Who's gonna pay for that?
The county will do it if they don't, if we can't get the landowners to do it. We'll, we'll clean it up and we'll charge them. We have to give them notice.
Get them to know that.
Well, there'll be a sign in the yard tomorrow probably. Uh, and they'll be put on notice, you'll see the sign. Might have to cut the grass if you can put it in the yard, what happened in the yard.
I'm told that one oh four, I'm told one oh four Barth Street has been taken care of.
Uh, Scott.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you make sure that the backyard is cut because they cut the front yard and the backyard was the one grown up with.
Okay. Ricky, the last time you drove by there, it was still grown up in the backyard?
The backyard was.
Okay. And that was within the past week or so, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we can adjudicate that one and I'll contact the landowner and tell him to back as well.
And I think I heard supervisor Gaines say two hundred was taken care of.
That's correct. And then Dogwood, ten Dogwood? I think that's where this is.
Dogwood.
But that one hadn't been done?
Scott, did I hear you kind of like handed it around?
You did. Another one on Second Street.
We got fifteen Raffin Circle, twenty-eight Greenwood Subdivision Road, one oh nine Mimosa Drive, fourteen Prince Edition, one oh four Hensley Road, three twenty-nine and Southmore Drive we just did, ten Dogwood Drive, twenty-one twenty-nine Second Street. Ricky, all those are pretty unkept?
Ricky?
All those are pretty unkept, needed the grass cut and whatnot?
Hey Ricky?
Can you hear me clearly?
Yeah, I can now. Uh, all the ones he just called out, uh, all need to be cut.
Oh, not the one on, uh, uh, one where there was John Holmes live down in there.
Prince Edition?
Prince Edition, that house need to be sold there, at the end of Prince Edition.
Okay.
It, it talked to you about the grass, they got the grass cut. But now, the grass was all over the house, now they cut the grass from around the house, the house got big holes and everything in it.
They got holes? Holes in their building needs to be removed?
Yeah.
Holes in the roof.
Ethan, you have, uh, a minute?
All right. I got various pictures of them where they were posted and stuff on all those sites. So we can incorporate those to the minutes.
Okay, do we need a motion to?
Yep, adjudicated those minutes and move on.
So moved.
That, motion by Mr. Milton, seconded by Mr. Gaines, adjudicate all those properties.
Can I say something first?
Yes.
Some of those.
Discussion, yeah.
Correct, can, um, get in the backyard with our tractors and stuff with that in county. I know the one on Second Street, we did have the sheriff walking last year. All the sisters, we cut, we cut the front, we just couldn't get in the back. I mean, they got board fences, you know, a lot of them and they laid over and things like that, so, um, I guess in the future, if we're gonna continue to do this, looks like we're gonna get more and more between us, a lot of them. We're gonna have to see about how to get some kind of mower, weed eater, things like that. We have one weed eater within High Road Department, we did create it around signs and fire hydrants that we use it for, you know, around our buildings. But other than that, we don't have that type of equipment to get in the back. Like I said, I, I don't wanna put it on the sheriff, cause I know they got a lot going on truly, but they did assist us on Second Street last year with that one. And, and y'all helped us with them too last year, so.
Get that mower, we'll have to.
Well, that's what I say.
Yeah, so, yeah, you're gonna see us there, sheriff, that'd be a big help if they can get it.
Our trailer broke down right now, we're trying to get the access fixed on it, but, uh, you got a trip, we'll help you out.
We got two weeks, so.
That's, you know, I'm just saying, if we continue with this, we might have to look at.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carried? All right, motion enclosed, public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carried, back in record session. Okay, ready to go around and say? Mr. Gray?
Yep.
Do you have, you have a report?
But I'm not gonna do it today, but I'm just, uh, a patient, a patient that I serve on the patient committee. We did do a revenue, you know, to, uh, to make sure, I don't know if we don't pay, but it makes sure, or not, or when we get money up here, that our money comes to citizens and counties and not to the state. So I don't know how to go pay. Anyway, uh, I really wanna tell you, uh, I, I, I think our supervisors, we need to, uh, try to come together and figure out, uh, with these budgets that we got coming up since this budget's passed. Uh, we got a lot going on and they want us to spend a lot of money, so I, we need to, everybody needs to cut their budget because, I mean, raising these taxes, so there's gonna be the help without, uh, sending something out to them and they both know raising their taxes. And, uh, one thing I wanna say is my credit goes out to the Big Land family again, the Butler family, the Cogan family, the Friends Big family, the Jackson family, the Locke, the Jones family. And, uh, my prayers go out to the, uh, guy got killed Saturday, the tenant that got killed and the other, uh, individuals that got injured. Uh, my prayers go out to their family. And my prayers also go out to former President Donald Trump and his family. And, uh, glad that he's safe. And, uh, I've been here for a long time, uh, we, we living in a country where people operating out of emotions and feelings and we need to get back in the God we trust. Cause emotion, people get emotional and they do things out of emotion and they regret it. At the end of the day, just praying and, uh, something just ain't right. We, we got bad spirits and the only way you gonna get rid of bad spirits is by praying out. President Dexter Stulmer.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Ms. Hutchins?
Yes, uh, my prayers go out to the Black family. Um, therefore, we can pray and not be thankful for Mr. Big Land. And, um, another thing else, uh, my prayers also go out to the one that was injured in the, uh, the ride, not the ride, but the, uh, rally the other day during President Trump, uh, rally speech. And it also goes out to him himself, I'm glad to know that he's safe because, uh, without him being safe, it could, it could have been worse, uh, without him being safe. Um, the next thing I have is, uh, I need to get approval for travel to Jackson on July eighteenth to attend the MAS Board of Directors meeting.
Okay, I have that in front of me.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, um, any names, motion carried? Go ahead, Ms. Hutchins.
Okay, and the next thing I have is we talked about, uh, always talking about how we're gonna finance the jail in the experience, but, um, if we reach out to also our financial consultant, um, Manny, who is one of our, uh, consultants, he can tell, uh, how we can finance this jail without, um, getting a, without having a tax increase. Uh, that's one thing we need to do, we go to them. Because without talking with our financial consultants, we would never know how we done to finance the jail or whatever, without having a tax increase. So I suggest that one day we reach out to them and have them come to the meeting and tell us how we can do that.
Uh, okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. Mr. Gaines?
Yeah, I just, I would say, uh, my separate goes out to everyone who have, uh, lost loved ones and definitely to the Big Land family who has, uh, been a name since in the community since I can remember, has been a pillar of the community and, uh, we always, you know, you feel, uh, the brotherhood and I definitely, uh, say prayers, keep his family in our prayers. And also pray for our country, you know, and a lot of people look at, and, uh, things, and I always say, especially as elected official, it is grown folks should have the right to agree to disagree. Just because you believe in. Just because you believe in one thing and I believe in others, I mean, that's why we have elections and that's why we sit at the table and vote, and we have to move forward in that, it's our right in the country we live in and, you know, anytime our country start going living like a third world country, it is, uh, you know, it's disturbing to you and if you have any kind of background or any kind of, uh, relief, uh, belief, you know, it says that in the last day, day of the great tribulation, you have all these things, nation against nation, family against family, mother against daughter, father against son, so you know, we are in those times, and what I try to do is check my care. I'm not responsible for anybody in the country, for anybody at the table, I'm responsible for my care. I was always taught, if you respect yours, you got to respect yourself before you can respect others. And so, you know, I try to do well to keep the respect of myself and, you know, it's sad to me, but, you know, and I thank God, I, you can't bring them back, but I, my prayers go for the family and the former president, um, you know, thank God that life is saved and, you know, and I'll just say to the public, um, you know, and our world we live in, God made us, so we got all kind of people. But it's up to you to choose what kind of person you're gonna be. I can't choose who you are, you can't choose who I am, but we can choose, and the change start with us. I can't change other folk, but I always can change me, and, uh, you know, it's back to going to school, so we're a few weeks out from going to school, so, uh, my prayers, um, goes out, hope all our kids transition good, our seniors to college and, uh, you got them transfer from junior high, uh, high school, and, uh, you know, I pray for our kids and, you know, hopefully we'll get a chance to attend a few of our back to school functions and do some things and, uh, I just say we pray one for another and I give it so.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines.
Uh, again, uh, Big Lane family, you know, James Big Lane is a legend in this community, uh, from founding United City Bank and employing two hundred and fifty roughly people throughout southwest Mississippi, um, and then being one of the founders of the balloon races that happens every year. Um, his, his impact will be felt for a long time, and, uh, at this time, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution in memory of Mr. Big Lane.
Second.
So moved.
Second. Okay, got a motion by Mr. Middleton. A second, I think by everybody on the board. Any more, any discussion? All in favor?
You know, not to be-
Motion carried, yeah.
Not to beat a dead horse, but what everybody appears talked about and what happened and what transpired over the weekend. Um, our country's in a rough spot right now, um, to wish ill will, death, or, or punishment on a fellow American is, is as sickening as it, as it can be. And some comments made by multiple people locally and nationally, uh, they need to find God, they need to dig deep, they need to pray, because the path we're on is bad, and, uh, I don't know, it's like, like supervisor Gaines said, go bug, that's your right. I run for office and people support God, I'm only, that's their right. Okay, so, everybody needs to dig deep and, and try to, uh, uh, it sounds like both candidates moving forward have been ran for unity, and, and that's what needs to happen, and then to put this nastiness behind us and, and try to fix our country. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Wes. Page?
Um, yeah, I have a few things. Um, I need approval for the July bonds.
So, motion by Mr. Gaines and second by Mr. Middleton for the July bonds. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any names? Motion carried.
I have the June, uh, tax redemption settlement.
You have a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any names? Motion carried.
We have another unclaimed bond, so I need approval for, um, Riverwood's, uh, cremation invoice to be paid on that body.
Settlement.
It is four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
I have travel for Holly Sandenberg and Melissa Stodner to attend a mental health, um, meeting in Jackson.
Need a motion?
Yes, please.
Moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any names? Motion carried.
I have a resignation letter for Jessica Davis, she's a chancery court reporter, and, um, she is moving, so.
Alright, need a motion?
Please.
Except the resignation. So, motion by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion?
You need a motion to advertise.
Jessica Davis.
Court reporter for chancery.
Jessica Davis.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any names? Motion carried. This is just for you then. How many colleagues are there?
No. Um, no, they did not say at this time that they were gonna hire or replace. Um, and I have, this is the second round of homestead letters that were sent out and I received one objection, so I need your approval to send that to the DOR for their, um, decision.
Alright, you need a name?
Uh, you can't do that.
Alright, Kelsa Carter, one oh two Open Drive, has an objection. Uh, I need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any, any names? Motion carried. You need signing?
That is it, another, another piece come.
Alright.
Thank you.
Mr. Slower?
No report.
No report. Ms. Washington?
I have my report, but I also want to, um, do the names before she's out. Um, she had a, um, spread across the June minutes for the credit card bill.
Okay, need the credit card bill, spread across the minutes, motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any names? Motion carried.
Then you also need permission to exercise for the half year deed and the one year deed, the seats not to be in the one year deed for the road department.
Moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any names? Motion carried.
Uh, then also wanted to, uh, submit three proposals that they had for the courthouse for the painting and the, um, spraying and getting down.
Pressure washing?
Pressure washing, yes. Um, the lowest bid, um, was a, Mr. Abbott, he had, um, three bids, I think, to, uh, Mr. Jones, he reviewed them. But the lowest bid was sixty-five nine eighty.
Yeah, read more.
John Abbott, he had, uh, a broad bid of sixty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, you have, um, there's another one, I don't see the name. Uh, Mr. E- Eddie Tinsley, his was for eighty thousand, and then Holmes painting floors was one hundred and eight thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty five cents. So the lowest bid was Mr. Johnny Evans. Sixty-five nine eighty.
And that includes all materials?
Uh, it says includes washing down the entire building, scraping and clean cop where needed, about two posts and paints on window bluebers, uh, porcelain, corners, climbing posts, all hand railings, all ladder posts, all walls and steps, also we repair fester where needed. Um, they are asking for, um, five installations as the job is, uh, being completed.
Five installments? Is that in our budget?
Um, yeah, I told me the report says, I, I, I don't know if, uh, the name asked us to do the price, uh, honoring for the four months to see if we needed to do it for our next year's budget, but I have to double check to see if she asked Jones to honor the price for the four months.
Okay, so we're gonna take those bids under advisement?
I make a motion, take it under advisement.
Alright. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Uh, for me, I had a chance to report, but you were in it, uh, for five, four, four, they just needed that increase for thirteen thousand.
And then what? Uh, motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor?
What was it, who's the president, what was the increase?
Thirteen thousand.
To what department?
Chancery.
Chancery, clerk, court.
The court?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, and what is your phone?
Uh, Randy, she had, um, asked for the last little meeting, I forgot the set made, but, um, it's for the chancery court for personnel for, for, uh,
Okay, where is the question, sir?
General funds.
Alright.
Alright, all in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Uh, I need permission to set up, uh, IP real estate site fund, um, yeah, okay, you have your number, but the names are relevant, my will be three seventy-five, I need permission to set up that fund, um, just so that we can have that money come in through and out for NDA project.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Motion to set up another fund, moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any names? Motion carried. Clears your report. Okay, let's see what I have, um. Um, Mr. Big Lane was a, was a good, good friend of mine, uh, one of those guys I could call and he, he let me in his office, uh, to talk and he, we talked about everything in the world, even if I done nothing. Uh, he was just a good man, he, he gave me, uh, chances on some things, he gave me, uh, he got tired of being in the oil business, he gave me most of his oil wells to take care of, uh, and didn't ask for a thing. And, um, it was a big give, it, it was one of those things that, uh, I'll never forget, I'll never forget that man, he, he is, uh, he's been good to me and when he didn't have to be, and, uh, and I'm sure most people will say the same thing about him, uh, he was a kind man, uh, and I'm, I'm gonna miss him, I'm, I hated to hear that, that he was sick and I thought he was gonna be okay and, um, uh, I, I hate that I'll never get to see him again. Um, the other thing I wanna discuss is what happened to, at the rally in, in, in Pennsylvania, uh, with Mr. Trump, um, that was, that was a miracle that he wasn't killed and that, and it was break, uh, complete breakdown in protection for, for somebody of his stature, um. He'd had his son on the stage a couple nights before that, and that, it would have been really bad for some, and, and I, I don't know what, what that kid was thinking or what he was doing, I don't know what, what some of the policemen were doing, how that ever happened, I just hope it doesn't happen again, but in this country, we're supposed to just vote, if you don't like something, you vote to change it, and, and, and shooting somebody or all this rhetoric that's going on, and some of this stuff that happened in, in Nashville, because of that, people like to hide behind their computers or, or something comes up and it comes in their head and immediately it's out on Facebook. Please take a breath, people, uh, think about what you're fixing to put out there, a lot of these people are gonna find out, it's gonna be consequences for what they did. When the Secret Service comes knocking on your door, it's serious, um, but they just need to think, I know we've got, we've got radical people on, on, on both sides of the aisle, left, right, uh, blacks, whites, we've all have radicals, and, 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 uh, most of us choose not to associate with, with them if, if we can help it, but they're just, they're just out there, and, and there's always gonna be some people like that out there, um, and, uh, like Mr. Gaines said, we can disagree about things, but in, in, we're still friends, um, um, and, uh, I just, I just pray that everybody will kinda chill out a little bit, maybe they'll do what they say they're gonna do, if they're gonna start being more, a little more unified and not talk down to each other, talk about each other so bad, uh, everybody will make their decision based on, hopefully, what one or the other can do for them, or if it's gonna be best for this country, and that, that is the most important thing here, what is best for the country, um, 'cause, 'cause we, we've had some bad things happen here lately, and I don't think on the world stage, we're looking real good to people right now, the rest of the world, but anyway, that's my report and, uh, uh, has anybody else got anything else to add?
Motion closed.
Okay, I mean, how many think that we, you need to name them, or we're gonna name them afterwards? Motion for closed, determination. I didn't know if there was one or a bunch.
So, one.
Motion, by first.
My motion, he second.
Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.